I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call up Reverend Shawn Thomas for indication. Thank you.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, God, I come to you today, God, just thanking you for another day of life.
Yes.
God, I lift up the school district to you today, dear God. Dear God, these board members, Lord. God, I pray for protection upon our children, upon our teachers, dear God. I pray that you lead, God, in directum in all they do, dear God. Lord, we know today we face, God, many challenges.
Yes.
But, God, we know there is nothing too great for you.
Nothing.
So, I ask now, dear God, that you move in a mighty way, dear God. God, that our actions and our words, dear God, be pleasing unto you alone.
Yes.
Dear God, that all we do and all we say, giving, giving just honor and praise unto you. God, I pray with you, be with us now.
Yes.
In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Again, we do have some great celebrating to do with many of our students and teachers. So, at this time, I will ask that Gail would come up to prevent, to present the Alpha Delta Kappa outstanding 5th graders.
Alice Rouse.
Oh, Alice, thank you, Alice. Sorry, Rouse. Alice, Rouse, and her team, thank you so much for coming.
Good afternoon. We are the ladies of Alpha Delta Kappa. We are an international honorary organization of women educators dedicated to educational excellence, altruism, and world understanding. In addition to presenting a scholarship to a worthy Putnam County graduate, the Gamma Delta Chapter honors with the Lamp of Learning Award is an outstanding 5th grader from Putnam County selected by their administration and 5th grade team. These students must meet the following criteria: excels academically, behaves well in class, exhibits a positive attitude, helps his or her classmates, participates in extracurricular school, community, and church activities. In addition to recognition, each student here today will also receive $50.
Wow.
Ms. Michelle knows our president, will go ahead and call out our students.
Students, when your names are called, if you could come up and also stay so at the end we could get a picture.
Okay. Lucas Bergen, Melon Elementary. Sidney Grace Colaw, Melrose Elementary. Gianna Constantino, Interlochen Elementary. Cassidy Vickers, James A. Long Elementary. Tyalia Young, Mosley Elementary. Finn Fetner, Aquila Elementary. Chance Hagens, E.H. Miller. Lexington Hansford, Children's Reading Center. Richard Martinez Aguilar, Middleton Barney Elementary. Congratulations and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. You guys scoot in a little bit. Scoot in a little bit, guys.
Nikki, get over here and get a picture.
Move closer, closer. That's it. Closer, closer.
Ms. Hughes, y'all want to get in? Y'all want to come to the picture, stand behind them maybe?
Madison, I've never seen a Hodge get an award for, for academics. That's wonderful.
You guys gonna step forward and let the lady stand behind you?
Yes, stand, there you go.
Alice, you want to come up behind you? Still too wide. Need to tighten up some more.
Now, if I can get all of you ladies to make sure that you're in between two kids. Okay.
No, 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 I don't want to be in.
And one, two, three.
Say $50.
I think, I think Evelyn's gonna take that money and spend it.
$50, enjoy that, guys. Thanks for the hard work.
So, since seven years, we'll be doing the outstanding dollars. There they are.
Yeah.
There they are.
Jarrett, did you want to come up and say a few words? No, you didn't? Okay.
Thank you so much, all those wonderful 5th graders that worked so hard all year long. We appreciate all their dedication and their teachers that inspire them and motivate them to, to do a great job in the classroom. Our next recognition is for the District Archery Team that will be done by Amanda Bernie. We could have the...
Amanda's coming in right now.
Okay. Oh, gosh, the rain has got you.
Yeah, Jarrett said he was gonna do all the presentations, huh? You talked all the way back from Kentucky. I can aggravate you now.
Together, Coach Bennett and Ms. Bernie, I just had Ms. Bernie, but, but of course, Coach Bennett too. You guys...
You're so much better at talking than I am.
We just recently returned Saturday from national competition in Louisville. This is the ninth year in a row that we've taken a team either from Jenkins and/or Palaca High School. This year, just Palaca High School went, and we took a total of 18 archers, 16 from Palaca High School, and two from QI Roberts. And we had a fabulous trip. We brought back a, took a few germs with us and brought some back, but I think everybody, including Jane, had a little bit to do with it. And Jane and David both attended with us, and it was, it was a really nice trip. Students shot very well. We finished a little bit higher than 50th percentile in one tournament and about the 50th percentile in the other two tournaments. But we brought five shooters with us today: Bailey, Miley, Jarrett, come up here, Justin, and Jacob in the back. I don't know why the other 18 or 13 didn't make it.
Sing.
When I was in school, if they said you could get out, I was there. So, I don't know where, I don't know where our kids are today, but these are, these are five of our representatives that attended with us. And they were the state champions for the second year in a row this year, so we're very proud of them.
Wow. Awesome.
Amanda, do you know, do you know if, if Jarrett was right? Is it Laurel or Yanni, Yanni, whatever, whatever that song is? Whatever you hear. Okay.
We'll go with what Jarrett said.
He sang it all the way back.
Ready, ready? One, two, three.
Great job, guys. Thank you so much for all your dedication and the time you spent.
And congratulations.
Now, one of the reasons that all these great students are up here with their achievements is because of these awesome teachers that we have. So, we have the high-impact teachers, a recognition of those that Dr. Cerny will do at this time.
Okay, thank you. We want to recognize teachers who have already been given certificates. I believe they were mailed to them directly from the Commissioner of Education. But as I call your name, if you would come up and just in the interest of time, if we can come up and we'd just, if you hold your applause, and then we'll definitely celebrate them all at one time, if that's okay. Let me describe for you what a high-impact teacher is. The Florida Department of Education identifies the top 30% of teachers statewide based on their three-year aggregate VAM scores. A VAM score is a value-added measure that shows how much their students grow over a year's time. Their VAM scores in either English Language Arts or Math as a high-impact teacher. This means that the majority of students assigned to this group of teachers had more growth on their state assessments than was expected when compared to students with similar demographics. So, these definitely are teachers of the high flyers in our district, and we are very proud to recognize them today. Some of them are here and some of them could not make it, but I'm gonna call all their names, and if you would just come up and stand, and then we will, you know, celebrate your accomplishments all at one time. We have Deanna Blitch, Benjamin Braddock, Brooke Carpenter, Carolyn Carter, Nicole Carver, Melanie Club, Rose Delaney, Chris DeLuca, Michael Duchin. Did I pronounce that right?
It's Duchaine.
Duchaine, thank you. Michael Duchaine, will pronounce that right. Susan Gladys, Luz Guerrero Arias, Teresa Hickinluber, Kristen Hudson, Loretta Johnston, Lisa Massey, Christie McDonald, Bethany Parker, Shay Redner Gould, Angela Simone, Paula Simmons, Victoria Smith, Jamie Turner, Mary Waltz Talbot, Amanda Winters, Misty Woods, Chris Wykoff, and Tiffany England. Let's give them a round of applause. Need some in front? Is that good enough?
Right, everyone, one, two, three.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you again. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Congratulations.
By the way, Misty's my daughter. I just thought I'd throw that in. I'm very proud.
Yes.
I figured you would.
She obviously took off of her mama.
And she made it in spite of you, David.
Made it in spite of me, that's correct.
Bet it was never a dull moment, though, wasn't it?
Thank you so much for all the support these teachers have and give them a minute.
Those twins are hers, but one of them's older than the other one, about eight minutes.
Who seems to be the dominant, the eight-minute earlier?
Tess is the oldest.
Look, you can beep it. We'll use that. Only two. Oh, wait, he's a presentation.
I know, I know, it's above the line. I noticed that. It's Mr. Paget, okay.
Let me read these. What do we got here?
Okay, next, we have another presentation by our executive director of the Lift Putnam, Mr. Jim Paget, and he's gonna speak on the Children's Trust of Putnam County. Thank you, Mr. Paget. We appreciate you and all your work you're doing for us.
Jim Paget, Executive Director of Lift Putnam. And I'll just say that this isn't the first time that when it came my turn to speak, that most everybody got up and left.
I've noticed, I've noticed that, yeah.
Yeah, I figured you had, you know. Anyway, I'm not here today to talk to you about Lift Putnam, but I'm here to talk with you about something that's extremely important to Lift Putnam and so many other people in the county and other nonprofits and various organizations, and that is the formation of what's called by statute a Children's Services Council. And if we were fortunate enough to have one formed in Putnam County, it would be called the Children's Trust of Putnam County. This initiative or this campaign to create, you know, such a county is, is not a Lift Putnam, Lift Putnam did not author this. Lift Putnam doesn't claim ownership. Perhaps we are the originator or, or maybe the, what is it they say? I think it's a famous singer that says you can't start a fire without a spark. Well, maybe, maybe we're the spark.
The Putnam spark, that's right.
No, Mr. Buckles, that was not Elvis Presley.
Sandy Giairre did say that.
That wasn't, that wasn't Elvis. Anyway, our board voted unanimously to pursue this campaign. And I'd just like to, you know, I've had a chance to talk with a number of you about it, and I think we circulated some information, so it's gonna come, you know, be somewhat repetitive for you folks, but maybe there's some folks in the audience that aren't quite as informed about it. I just want to talk really a little bit about what it is, how it comes to being, if it comes to being, what it does, what it can do, what it can't do, and how it can benefit children. Basically, it has us, the creation of these Children's Services Councils, and there are only like eight or 10 of them in the state. I've got a list. Broward County has one, Hillsborough, Martin County, Miami Dade, Palm Beach, Pinellas, St. Lucie. Alachua has it on their ballot for November, and Leon County, I think, is also gonna have it on their ballot for November. And that's the way it's created. It has to be approved by the voters at a general election. Now, that can be either in the primary or the general election in November. But essentially, it's a legislative opportunity that's given to individual counties to address local problems by focusing on children and the needs of children, the thought being that, obviously, you know, that our children are our future. And if any individual counties have particular problems that they want to address by forming such a council, then they have the local option to do it. It's, the vote is decided strictly by Putnam County electors at either an August or November primary, and I'll talk with you a little bit later about where we stand in Putnam County. But the council, there's two ways, you know. One, one provision is to have a very large membership of 33 members. There's only one county in Florida that does that, that's Miami Dade, because they're so large. The others that I mentioned all have the 10-member councils, and five of those 10 are determined by the statute, are prescribed by the statute. And they are your superintendent of schools is one member, a school board member is chosen by the school board is a member of the council if it's formed, a member from the Board of County Commissioners is chosen by the Board of County Commissioners is a member, the juvenile judge in the county, and if there's more than one, then the chief judge decides who will serve on the council, and a representative from the Department of Children and Families. Now, those five are mandated by the statute. The other five are appointed by the governor after the governor is given, and it's, I think, by district. And the Board of County Commissioners has the responsibility of selecting three people for the governor's consideration for each seat, and then the governor is obligated by statute to make a decision within 45 days. Whether he or she does, don't know, but that's what the statute says. The statute also says if the governor doesn't like the list, he can send it back to the Board of County Commissioners. But all the members have to be local. The five that I mentioned that are mandated by the statute and the other five that are selected by the governor have to be local residents, and they have to have been residents of Putnam County for at least two years before they are appointed. Now, they serve four-year terms. They can be removed by the governor for whatever type of misconduct, and the entire program, if you will, can be rescinded by the voters should they approve it and later want to remove it by vote. The program lasts for 12 years, and what it does, it authorizes this council, excuse me, it authorizes this council to levy up to, up to, but not exceeding a half a mil for, in ad verum taxes for these children's services. The council has the discretion to go to a half a mil, but they can't exceed it. Now, this council becomes a separate legal entity. It's not controlled by the school board, it's not controlled by the Board of County Commissioners, it's not controlled by any other governmental entity. The monies, should this pass and the levy be made to raise these monies for children, they're collected by the tax collector, and then they are given directly to the council, and then the council determines how they're to be distributed, and the distribution is based an awful lot like an application to a group such as the United Way. If a nonprofit group has a program that benefits children ages birth to 18 only, then they can make application to this council for funds. But the council has very broad discretion in which requests or applications it grants and which ones it does not. You probably know that a half a mil is, I think, 50 cents for every $1,000 in value on your taxable property. So, if you have $100,000 worth of taxable real property, you know, your additional tax bill would be 50 bucks or a little less than a dollar a week. I've checked with our tax assessor, and in Putnam County, the tax for the average landowner would be considerably less than that, probably in the range of about $35 or $36 a year. So, you're really talking about a relative small amount of money for the average taxpayer. What can, you know, what, what can this council do with the money and what can't they do? The statute, and I'm not gonna read you a whole bunch of it, but the statute says that the council can provide such preventative developmental treatment and rehabilitative for services for children as the council feels is needed for the general welfare of the county. So, you can see that the discretion is very broad. It also provides that it can, excuse me, provide other services for all children if it's, again, in the best interest of the general welfare of the county. And allocation of certain funds can also be made to other agencies in the county which provide children's services. The statute's real clear, the monies cannot be given directly to the school board, and the monies cannot be given directly to the Board of County Commissioners. Now, I know some people in the educational community have already mentioned, say, well, why, why should I support this? I'm an educator in Putnam County, and the law says the money can't go to the school board. Well, the money can go to organizations that provide services and benefits for children and schoolchildren. And some of the things that are being done in other counties, there's a big focus, as I'm sure you're aware, on early education. So, we're seeing programs for preschool programs, after-school programs, programs for third grade, excuse me, three-year-olds prior to the pre-K age of four. We're seeing pre-K creative contributions being made in different counties. School nurses is something that's being provided, various mental and physical health programs for, for kids, enhanced literacy, focus on make sure every child is reading at fourth grade level by the time they get to fourth grade. That's the type of programs that even though the money can't be paid straight to the school system, it can be provided to nonprofits or other organizations who in turn will use the money to benefit the school system or our children in general. I think I've already mentioned that if the, if the county was to approve this at the ballot or on the ballot, and then later decided they didn't like it, didn't work, there's a procedure where they can end it. So, it's not, you know, a situation where the county is bridled forever if they approve it and then later are dissatisfied. The council members, they are not elected to this position. They are not paid anything. Now, you do have, as I mentioned, some elected officials who serve on the council, your superintendent of schools, a school board member, a Board of County Commission member. And for that matter, you know, our judges are elected. But as far as the actual council position, there's no election and there's no pay. They can be reimbursed for mileage, but there is, is no salary. They have the authority to employ, say, a CEO to administer the program and to hire staff. From what I've heard is that the administrative staff that's needed is pretty, is pretty minimal. So, that's, that's one of the functions of the council should it, should it get started. It has to comply with the Sunshine Law, has to comply with all of our, the ethics standards that you folks have to comply with, goes through the same budgetary process that you have to go through, and it's required by law to file annual reports to the public. Now, by the way, feel free to interrupt my, you know, my babbling to ask any questions and if I feel that I can't. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. You said a half mil. They can, who levies the half mil? Do the voters decide that when they vote, or the voters just create this 10-person panel and they levy the taxes?
Well, technically, and well legally, the panel or the council levies, has the power to levy, but the ballot language that's being used or has been used in most all the counties and what they're using in Alachua County, now, the ballot language makes specific reference to levying up to a half mil for a program that could last for 12 years. So, when the public, you know, if, if there's gonna be ballot language in Putnam County, there's a good likelihood that that half mil reference would be in there as well as the length of the, of the program, that is, that is 12 years.
Also, I don't know if you mentioned, and I didn't catch it, but what does a half mil raise? How much money?
50 cents per $1,000 of taxable.
But I mean, if we, if...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The council levied a half mil, how much money would that give them?
Thank you for asking that. I almost forgot it. Almost $2 million a year based upon our current tax base, and I think those are some figures that Rhonda shared with me and, or with us, and also the tax assessor has given us that same figure. And I'm glad you asked that for another reason, because if the council is formed, it would receive those ad verum taxes, which would approximate $2 million right now in Putnam County. But it also qualifies the council, if it exists, to apply to DCF for grants, and these grants are only available to these councils. In other words, the school board or the board, you know, could not access this money, but a council, again, if it's formed, can. And I understand that these councils are also qualifying for matching funds. So, you know, the $2 million could well be a floor rather than a, than a ceiling. What, what are we asking today? We're not asking you to, to give us, give any money to this campaign. We're not asking for your endorsement today. We hope we have, and I may not be the person that reappears before you, should we have the opportunity to pursue this, but we're not asking for your endorsement today, maybe later on. But we're not asking you really to vote on anything today. What are we asking? What are we asking? This matter will be voted on by the Board of County Commissioners next Tuesday, May the 22nd at 9:00. And what they're going to simply vote on is whether or not to put it on the ballot and let the people decide for themselves if they want to engage in this bit of self-help and some financial commitment to form this, this program. So, you know, I would encourage you, and we've got so many people that have come forward, you know, and have just volunteered to be a part of this, but if you can make it to the Board of County Commissioners meeting next Tuesday at 9:00, just to show or encourage them, simply put it on the ballot. You know, you're not asking for their yea or their nay, but just to give the people of Putnam County a chance to say whether or not they need this and whether or not they want it. The public says no, we don't, so be it, the public's spoken. The public says yes, I think that would be a plus. But in any event, the only way the public can take advantage or even consider this opportunity is if it's on the ballot. And it can't get on the ballot unless the Board of County Commissioners puts it on the ballot. Now, we had a conversation with them about a week ago, and I thought it, it went very well. There was like a dozen people there that were supportive of this campaign, and it seemed like they were pretty receptive to the idea of putting it on the ballot. So if you can make it, you know, I think it would be worthwhile.
When is that?
Next Tuesday at 9:00, the Board of County Commissioners' meeting room.
Do you have another meeting later that afternoon?
Hmm, is this a gotcha question or something?
No, I'll be in touch.
All right.
All right, do I?
No, I don't.
Oh, yes, yeah, at 5:00.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Well, that's kind of a party rather than a meeting, isn't it?
I think.
There alcohol.
He would, if he's there, yeah, he's got, you know, he, he has to clean up with that stuff.
I appreciate Mr. Page. Thanks for all the information and keeping us informed.
Okay, hey, if y'all can make it, you know, and all we'd be doing is saying, hey, folks, just put it on the ballot, let the people decide.
Let the people decide. Okay, great.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim.
We appreciate that. At this time, there is public comment time. If you wanted to speak, you could grab a form and, and fill it out, and we have two so far. If anyone else had one they wanted to turn in, now would be the time to do that. Number one, the first person that turned in the form was Tom Wells, if you could come up. Mr. Wells?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
You moved executive session?
Yes, I'm sorry, we moved executive session to the end of the meeting. So yes, come on, yeah.
Good morning.
Yes, you're good, thank you, sir, for coming.
Good afternoon, I'm Tom Wells. I reside at 502 Northeast 6th Avenue in Gainesville, Florida. I am running for US Congress in this Florida District 3, which includes beautiful Putnam County. By profession, by training, I am a scientist, specifically a physicist. My whole career has been spent finding problems, identifying, understanding, and solving problems. And the problem we're here to talk about, that I'm here to talk about today, is the Guardian Program proposed by the state legislature for Putnam County and all the other counties in Florida. So we do have a big problem with guns in America. And this is, since I'm a Democrat and I'm talking about gun control, this is the point at which people generally ask, do you support the Second Amendment, sir? Yes, I support the Second Amendment. I support the whole Constitution. I never get any blowback on that, everybody's good with supporting the whole Constitution, but here's what the Constitution says. It says that the Supreme Court is the final judge of what is and is not constitutional. Now, in the last 40 years, they've, they've made some decisions which I take great exception to. They're calling money speech, they're calling corporations people, but you know what? I don't get to decide. It doesn't matter if I'm happy with that or not. It's probably a good thing I don't get to decide. What have they got to say about the Second Amendment lately? Last year, a case from the state of Maryland came to the Federal Court of Appeals. The Federal Court of Appeals ruled 10-4 that the Maryland law was constitutional. That law banned assault weapons with a pretty broad definition. It required a lot of jumping and hooping and training before you can get a carry permit, open or concealed. It requires training to have a permit to get a handgun. These things are all constitutional. Now, I have had individuals, I have had police officers, and I have spoken with my congressional representative, and they all questioned the Supreme Court, saying that if we go this way, we're getting on a slippery slope and we will go inevitably somewhere, I don't know. The Constitution is not a slippery slope. This is what it says, the Supreme Court has ruled. You can work to amend the Constitution, but you can't just deny its wholeness and acceptability. So what are we going to do about Guardian Programs? Do we want to arm teachers? Is 132 hours of training sufficient? Do we want to fortify our schools? Everybody wants their children to be safe in school. I want my children to be safe every place they go. I want them to be safe in the movie theaters, I want them to be safe at Wolf House, I want them to have the same security everywhere they go that the House and Senate of the state and the federal government enjoy, knowing that they're in an arms-free zone, just like the NRA conventions. I want them to know that we have their backs everywhere. And 132 hours, if that's not enough training for a teacher, maybe it's not enough training to have a handgun anyway. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Perry. Thank you.
Mike Perry, 601 Reed Street, Placa, Florida. I hope that Mrs. Crawford has a fast recovery. Madam Chair, it was my pleasure to serve as the chairman of the Safe School Task Force, and I'd like to thank my fellow members for their service in that regard. While I realize the board has rejected our recommendation, the continuing debate on this subject has caused me to reflect on the rationale behind our recommendation. I am concerned that I did not properly explain our reasoning at our, I believe it was April 27th board meeting. The fact of the matter is that we are going to have guns and armed security in our elementary schools. And since no decision has been made, please allow me to explain our support for what is referred to as Option 6 or the Guardian Program in greater detail. First of all, Madam Chair, the task force understood that the Guardian Program applicants would be thoroughly vetted and trained by the Sheriff's Office. We trusted the Sheriff's Office could do this. Number two, we understood that the Guardians Program would be comprised of volunteers. These applicants knew the training would be rigorous and understood the risks, yet they wanted to serve in that capacity. Number three, we understood as a task, as a, as a task force, that the Guardian Program, when implemented, would be comprised of people who were committed and dedicated every day to the safety of our students. Number four, we understood that the members of the Guardian Program would already be familiar with their schools and their students and would be able to act on any information provided by students. Conversely, the task force was concerned that hired security guards would not be familiar with our schools or our students. The task force reasoned that we would rather have individuals motivated by their love, dedication, and commitment to their students and who already are entrusted with their safety as opposed to individuals doing a job for money. The task force finally decided that, given the circumstances, that we would trust the employees of the Putnam County School District who volunteered to protect our children. Madam Chair, I realize this is a divisive issue, and I do appreciate the opportunity to expand a little bit on what the task force that this board authorized and created had on their minds with their recommendation. I appreciate it, I hope everyone has a nice evening.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Okay, any more public comments were turned in? Okay, at this time, we will move to the consent agenda. We will not do the executive session till the end. Ms. Gilliard, did you have any items?
I'm good. Everything's taken care of.
Mr. Buckles?
I'm fine.
I had I-1. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item I-1.
It's second.
More discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. I-1, I just, I feel like it's important to, this is the discussion that we actually are going to have under M-2. So when I looked at it, I thought, well, procedurally, we approved the allocations, I mean, we approved, yeah, I guess it is allocations and the job descriptions. And then at M-2, if we wanted any changes, it might get a little confusing. So rather than bring up my questions at M-2, I thought maybe it would be appropriate because the job descriptions for the, it's in reference to the mental health assistance allocation per Senate Bill 7026. So I guess my question was, we did, Mr. Bowling, and maybe you can answer that, we had some discussion about, we had a, a quick discussion. Unfortunately, we always run out of time when it relates to the mental discussion in our workshops, but there was the two job descriptions. First, I believe, and I just wanted to reiterate this before we voted on it, that the lead guidance counselor is the same position, we're just changing the name. Is that correct?
No.
No.
That's actually incorrect. So what I'm going to do is pass around a proposed org chart for student services.
Okay.
As we go forward.
You're supposed to get a packet.
Yes, yes, ma'am, each of you. And I kind of anticipated it because there's so many new things with mental health.
Yeah.
And, and the funding sources are coming from two different places. Also enclosed some supporting documentation as well.
Okay.
So let's start on the first page, the org chart itself. If you look at the, the three posi, I'm sorry, the four positions on the left-hand side, starting with the mental health case supervisor in blue, and then directly up under that are the three licensed mental health counselors, okay? Those will be funded strictly from the mental health allocation. Now, I think your question had to do more with job description than actual funding source. The mental health counselors, they have the same job descriptions as our current counselors over on the ESC side that we already currently have employed. We just have to hire more of them to help serve the needs of our regular population. The mental health case supervisor, that's that person who will actually be a liaison between our school-based counselors and the community-based counselors and program and services out there, and then also coordinate all the, the mental health counseling across the district. And they will also supervise the three new mental health counselors that, that supervise the, I'm sorry, that serve the regular population. So let me know if you have any questions there before I switch over to what you asked about a minute ago in the lead guidance counselor.
So the mental health, the job description, the men, the case supervisor does not oversee the guidance?
No, ma'am.
They are only overseeing the three licensed mental health counselors?
Correct.
Okay. And where?
Okay, now, if you look over to the other side where it says Title IV allocation, lead counselor vacant, okay? And then you have just, just job description underneath that. If you look kind of above that, you have an executive secretary and a director. We also have, and if you look in the packet, the Title IV grant is currently in existence. And if you look at this page, it lists all the things that we're responsible for with the Title IV grant. It's expanding, it's getting a lot bigger, and that's why we're splitting student services and safety and security, because safety and security is going to get bigger by definition anyway. We just spent another hour in workshop talking about how that department is getting ready to grow. Well, with the mental health allocation falling under student services, and then the Title IV, all of the additional things that have to be done under Title IV, student services is going to be a, a lot bigger now.
Right, right.
And so that, that allocation is actually increasing from 100 and some odd thousand dollars, which we currently have, to over $400,000.
Okay.
And that will effectively employ a lead counselor who will be responsible for pushing out a lot of the things that are on that page, as well as maintaining the Title IV grant itself, and then also making sure all the other deliverables are in place. Student Services Director will kind of oversee everything in student services, and of course, we need another executive secretary, but that's, that's, and then if you also look on there, mental health counseling here is also listed on here as well. So MTSS, PBIS, all of the things in the tier-one level, and maybe even getting our, our current guidance counselors some mental health training as well, they'll be responsible, and meeting with the, the guidance counselors monthly and just kind of steering that whole boat. So it's, it's basically two different job descriptions, two different.
So we still do have a district guidance counselor?
Yes.
And this is a lead counselor?
Right. Currently, currently Renee Huff is kind of serving, but, you know, we wear lots of different hats here at the district office. She's going to pick up some additional responsibilities, and Laura can help me out if, if I get some of this wrong, but-
We'll probably provide a, a district org chart later, because we're making some changes more than just-
Got you, got you.
-student services and security. So that will also impact instruction. So we'll come, we'll bring that back probably in the summertime.
But the Title IV allocation, you did mention that you said it went from 100,000 to 400,000?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And that's reoccurring to where we could spend it on salaries?
Yes.
Oh, awesome. But we're not paying for any of the, all the mental health-
Now, that, that, that won't kick in until, I think, in September, and so we won't look to hire these people until we actually have funding in place to hire them. So we're not going, it's not even a charge-back grant, as I understand it, so we can't hire anybody until we actually, there may be a way to, to bring in a, a counselor, if you will, to do some of the work that needs to be done on the front end, if we can find a way to pay them with the existing grant, because there's some money left over there with the existing 100 and something-plus-thousand-dollar grant. So if we can afford to do that, we certainly will, but we won't hire a director and an executive secretary or, or any other support personnel, you know, unless some other moves are made. But we won't fund any new positions unless that money is available. And it will be, it's just a matter of when.
Let me just clarify, we may need to bring someone in, in an acting manner to, in that director's position.
And that's why I said we won't create any new positions until we-
Right, right, it won't, because of the, when the money starts, maybe somebody to take on that responsibility until that money kicks in.
We're hiring, and I'm just looking from a perspective of fiscal responsibility, we're creating an allocation and we don't have the money till September and today.
Well, we know, and, 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 yes.
Doesn't mean you have to fill it.
And that's not, and, and I mean, honestly, the work isn't going anywhere, but what I'm, what I'm assuring is that we will not spend, and, and I've had this conversation with Rhonda extensively, we, we, we won't spend money we essentially don't have. But we do need to make plans, and, and so, you know, this is, this is the plan as we go forward. However, we won't, we, like everything else, we have to find a way to get the work done until we can afford the people. That grant money is coming, so the, the funding will be there, but it just, the, the parameters of the grant simply doesn't start until September. So we're operating under this year's 100 and something-plus-thousand dollars until September.
There's, there's some responsibilities that need to take place before September, so we'll have somebody step in and do that.
So the lead counselor position is the only one Title IV that you are currently not funded for?
We, well, there-
September?
It, it depends on how you look at it. If you look at this org chart that's taking place fully in September, then we'll have the money for all of it. But this org chart won't completely be in place until the funding is available. That executive secretary will go unfilled until that grant is fully kicked in.
So we're not taking any money away from anything else?
Right, right. We're, we're very respectful to the general fund, and with everything else going on, there's no way that we would try and touch anything that we actually couldn't afford.
And this is not related to the mental health allocations, correct?
No, that's on the left-hand side, and that's already funded.
Reiterate that, and that's something that you will, we don't get until-
July?
July?
It's not going to start in July, once the plan is submitted, okay?
Yeah, so-
It's just the record was categorical, the money comes in twice a month, you get 112, I mean, 124.
Right, okay.
Four times throughout the year.
So basically, that, those positions, that you needed those positions to go ahead and get that approved by the state, part of that Senate Bill 7026. and get that approved by the state, part of that Senate Bill seventy twenty-six?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, yeah, and, and the reason that it's put here in the here and now, all of it, is because all these things have to happen, and, and we wanna get the best available people, or at least start advertising and say, "This is coming up, please apply."
Right.
So, when we are able to hire you, we can bring you on board, because everyone else is doing the same thing.
Right, in fact, Nefet had a behavior analyst, and I was kinda curious, I wonder if that will be serving our community? That's a behavior analyst job description that he, that they are hiring.
Some of those are shared services?
Yeah, but, uh...
And, and I don't believe, because I was in a meeting today, I don't believe Putnam County is, uh, gonna be any, a part of that. Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think most of those are mainly with the counties in the western side of the Nefet districts that are really close together, in small counties.
Right.
But those are shared services.
Yeah, and I guess I was just concerned because the, the case, the mental, um, case supervisor and the mental health counselors, they were pretty specific, and if we just use the ESC, wherever Andy is, that job description, I just wanted to make sure that Senate Bill seventy twenty-six piece that said these specific things have to be part of that job description.
Really and truly, I, I wanted those people to be a little bit different, and even paid a little bit more, and be support personnel just because of, of, of the competition, and I wanted to say, "Our package is better, um, and we pay more, so come to work for us." But because we already have existing mental health counselors, Tanya and I tried to find a job description that fit both, um, and, and the analogy I came up with is, you know, it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, but we're calling it a chicken, but we already have the counselor that's called a duck over here.
Sound like a duck.
Right, so, so, we had to call it a duck. We have to call them all ducks, because they're all essentially the same thing, mental health counselors, and we can't have mental health counselors on, uh, the support schedule and the, um, the instructional schedule at the same time, we're operating under two separate job descriptions.
Yeah, as long as the state approves it.
Serving the same functions essentially.
Yeah, that, that plan, I know that they were real specific with what they had to have as their, you know, job description, but...
It's a mental health counselor.
Okay, so, we're good with that. Okay, that's, does anybody else have any questions about that from Mr. Bowling?
No ma'am, I make a motion, we, uh, never mind, we gotta...
Yeah.
You've got, you, you pulled it, so you need to...
Just make a motion.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Now, go to emergency items. Number one is hire instructional personnel and bus drivers for academically-focused field trips for federally, federally-funded summer programs.
Moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Number two, overnight trip, QI Roberts' trip to FFA to Orlando, June eleventh through the fifteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Number three, twenty seventeen eighteen, personal allocation change, change number twenty, twenty point six, time-sensitive.
I make a motion, motion, we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Back to regular session. Next we have... Oh, unfinished. Okay, the first one is the safe school allocation per Bill Senate twenty, uh, seventy twenty-six.
Madam Chairman, can I, can I make a request?
Sure.
Can I request that absent Ms. Crawford being here, that we table this?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Make a motion, David.
I'd like to make a motion that absent Ms. Crawford, uh, who is unable to be here because of sickness, that we table this motion and, uh, and reschedule it, I suppose, at the next board meeting? Okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Nope, okay. I will say that we did ask in our workshop today for additional information, Palaca Police in Crescent City in our Monday did ask for some information concerning contracts with, whether it's safety security officers or SROs, and the chief of, um, police of Palaca will be emailing those. So, at some point, we will need to set up a workshop to discuss those contracts and, um, how we wanna move forward with that, if that's a possibility, and, um, whether or not we renegotiate our other contracts with the sheriff is all a discussion that needs to take place, but I feel that would be dependent upon when we do receive those contracts, that they will be emailing us.
I agree.
So, um, we will have a workshop, so...
As soon as possible.
As soon as we get those in the, um, and also, I will wanted to mention that the chief of Crescent City Police, he was, um, kind enough to offer a summary. He is at a, um, Safety Task Force Summit in Orlando today, and he couldn't attend, and he wanted to, it was all about the safety schools, um, Senate Bill seventy twenty-six, and he would bring back some information, so I would request that when we do have that workshop, that he would be able to present some of his findings that he was able to go and, and research.
That would be great.
Okay, so, we will table the item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Okay, mental health assistance allocation. Mr. Bowling, I guess I, like I said, I really kinda wanted those questions answered before voting on that, so that's why...
Right, and, and if you refer back to the exact same document that we just talked about?
Yes.
Um, the plan, the plan is there, and it's this one, the way, and it's simple, it simply says, "Mental health assistance allocation," and if you look at the supporting documentation, that's, that's just pulled directly from seventy twenty-six. I highlighted some of the language that's in the plan itself, and then if you look at the second page on, uh, A one, towards the top of the page, "The school district must develop and submit a detailed plan outlining the local program and plan expenditures to the district school board for approval." That's what I'm doing. It's just saying this is how we'll spend the money.
Absolutely, and I do appreciate your, um, getting those things hired. I know in the, and we would, we had a great workshop with, uh, Sednet, and hopefully there'll be some more to follow with that as far as training according to this moving forward, so... Anybody have questions?
The fun is just beginning.
Oh, yeah.
I do know the, uh, I'm trying to remember who, the gentleman that was talking to us said that, Vicky Buckles, who is a second or third coming man.
Stewart Marchman, yeah.
She is, uh, she's, can be of some help to you, Thomas, I'm sure. You could, you know, you, you would know her if you'd talked to her, you probably have dealt with her before.
I'm, I'm looking forward to hiring the lead counselor.
Yeah.
Here on the left-hand side of that org chart with the mental health allocation, someone who actually knows about mental health counseling.
She's way above that, though, I don't know what she does, but she's with the state.
This is just an overall skeleton of how we plan to spend this money, but in terms of a, an actual plan of how to actually make all of this work district-wide, we do need to hire professionals.
She might can help you get some money somehow.
Again, I think it's important to, to reiterate that we have to continue to partner with other...
What was his name, Carl, Carl, the gentleman that was here?
Yeah, from Sednet, Colson.
Colson.
Okay.
He'll consider, continue, he's an advocate for us to get more of these outside entities and stat, just Stewart Marchman's our only resource.
And as a matter of fact, that, the lead counselor on the, uh, the right-hand side of that org chart again, will be instrumental in doing that as well. As a matter of fact, Renee has already, uh, Renee Huff, that is, has already reached out to, uh, and Renee, I don't know if you wanna speak to this or not, but we were just talking about it right before we came in here, and it was about getting our own existing guidance counselors some mental health counseling training.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Through Carl Colson and some of the work in, uh, that he's doing and, and his particular organization, so...
Yeah, we had a lot of great information from him, and then another, um, person that would offer training, so we need to, this summer would definitely be a time to try to utilize that, um, training.
Absolutely, right.
So, I appreciate that.
Go.
Further discussion? We do need a, a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign from no. Motion carries four zero. Okay, report time. We have, how about Ms. Gilliard, you ready?
I don't have anything, just, I'm pleased with the young people, those fifth graders that achieve, um, high honors and being recognized by that, uh, honor society, it's, it's great. And then for our impact teachers, again, kudos, thumbs up to them for doing the excellent job that they do. And then to those that may have fallen short just by a few points, we wanna commend them for their efforts as well. That's it.
Okay, we're back to all the good stuff. Mr. Buckles?
I appreciate Mike Perry coming in, kinda giving you, all of us, some of that information. I did not attend any of those meetings, and I had confidence in them, so, you know, I've watched all of us struggle with this project, and I, I don't really know exactly what I'm gonna vote on or how I'm gonna vote when the end comes, but I know we will, we will have to comply with the law sooner, a- at some point in the future. I do know that what I talked about today of, of the public schools being a common place in the legal language describing in loco parente, which all educators are bound by, by law, in the nation, um, certainly in the state of Florida, that applies, and I'm not certain that in the definition that the legislature didn't use the term guardian to reflect the way it is described, because once these children are delivered to our schools, they are delivered in a fashion to, uh, be entrusted to our, all of our school people, whether they be teachers, principals, deans, counselors, and, you know, they're, they're our children when we get them. And much like how this, I was reading two school laws, just, you know, reiterating some of the things that I remember from the times that I studied, uh, the epinephrine shots that teachers are indemnified from, from, uh, a child having a reaction and maybe possibly dying from, from that, and, I mean, the school district would probably be held liable anyway, but, I mean, it's, the law indemnifies them personally for actions that they take to do a variety of things, but in particular, um, I know, I know people like, like Sandy Gilliard, and she can tell you she wouldn't do it or not, but I guarantee you, if she had a child in danger, she would be there, and I've, I've watched her do it, I, I did it, and all of our principals and other people are going, going to do it, whether a, a decision is made to, uh, help them defend themselves or not, and for that, I'm extremely proud, and it, and, and Mike said something that I really liked. No one has the passion for the children and their safety in these schools more than the people that work with them each and every day and know them, and I don't care who you are, until you see them each and every day and they're entrusted to you, then they are yours, and you give up, you put yourself in positions that would not be prudent for people if you have young children at home depending on you, so, and that's men and women. And with that said, I think I've said enough about that, I, I, I mean, it's, all these are, are workable solutions, and, I mean, it's gonna boil down to the, what someone told me earlier, it's the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room is the financing, uh, you know, and do you want recent, more resource officers, or do you want somebody for so many hours a day that's been retired, and do you want to work with, what, you know, whichever we choose, we're going to have to, a majority of this board's gonna have to choose, do you follow state law? I think you all know that, and I think we're about to come to the end of this process at some point, but boy, it has been a lot of, a lot of project gathering and, and stuff that, I, I don't, I don't know, it's, nothing ever is easy as it seems, but, um, I just, my, my motto was always, "I am on behalf of the child, and whatever we can do to keep the child safe, the children safe, and our employees, and we're gonna be money ahead." So, anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Orson?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Nikki. I know how much time you've put into this, uh, providing the entire board with so much information, and I really appreciate you. I think you're a great board member, and I wanna thank you for your hard work on this. I attended the IHS award ceremony this morning, and it was so nice to see so many kids getting scholarships from so many organizations in this community. It's really amazing, we had West Putnam Organizations and then Putnam County Organizations, and I was privileged to give out a scholarship from one organizations that I'm with, and it was really nice. And the last thing I'd like to say is, like you, David, uh, this has been a, a massive undertaking, this project, I'm on the board twelve years, this is the biggest, most important decision we've faced, I've faced as a board member, anyway. And you've heard about our master board status. Florida School Board Association came to the board and the superintendent, and we had, simply put, team-building exercises. And if you recall, on the first day, the main thing was to find our, the things we had in common, we're all different, but there would be things that we had in common, and this team, the superintendent and the board, all came up with the se, and, you know, we have our own things, but then every one of us were compassionate and care about the kids first, big time, every one of us, and we discovered that, and I have confidence that together, we can do almost anything. So, thank you again, Nikki, and I'm done.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you, I appreciate that. I did wanna make a quick statement about, as we do frantically, um, try to research and inform ourselves and make an educated decision about school safety related to arming personnel in our schools, the state director of school safety will not officially be in his office until May twenty-ninth. Damian Kelly was hired May first for the position, but he will be out of the country on vacation until a start date of May twenty-ninth. His office has received hundreds of questions from every school district in Florida, and we are all wait, patiently waiting for answers so that we can do what's in the best interest of our students. The one thing I did confirm after speaking to the Government Relations Office, FLDOE, is that the safety plan is only to be, um, done by the school board, there was something about whether or not the sheriff signs off, and that is absolutely not true, so there is just a, the school board is the one who does that, there is a school hardening that we collaborate with the sheriff. Another piece of pertinent information that needs to be addressed is the fact that the new state law does not have a deadline to have armed personnel in all of our schools by the beginning of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. The letter sent by government, Governor Scott November, in March, had a list of very unrealistic suggested deadlines for various components of the new law, but it's quite obvious that his deadlines are not attainable, so I just reiterate the fact that we have spent a lot of time, more workshops than ever before, with one subject that we've had in the school board, and I appreciate all the fellow board members that do spend the time, and we do spend time talking to different law enforcement agencies about possibilities. So, again, the meeting today was about making another, the school safety officer option, that's number two, that we hadn't really discussed, and whether or not we contract with the local law enforcement agencies or do our own, there's a, a possibility, and again, we are continually to collaborate with all of the agencies in our district to make sure these things are done correctly. So, I, the one good thing out of this is I've talked to more school personnel, superintendents, law enforcement officers across the state, and they're very kind, and they're very, um, understanding of our difficult situation, because they are in the same situation, and they're very knowledgeable, and again, they keep saying, "Hey, you know, we, we commend the school board, nobody wants this task." Again, every one of our colleagues across the state, all the school boards, wow, we're, we're under a lot of, um, decision-making that we're trying to become experts. Again, I said it in our meeting, the five of us have over a hundred years of experience in education and zero in law enforcement, and that's something that we are definitely, they've charged us with making the decision, and that's why I feel so passionate about reaching out to other districts and what they're doing in all aspects, the superintendents, the law enforcements, I've spoken to sheriffs in Polk County and Pasco, and there's several other people that really wanna offer input, and so, we're all in this together, and I continue to, um, to look forward to different options, and we need to make sure we do it, um, not in a knee-jerk reaction like the state did.
On, on the bright side, you patted me on the back before you were gonna send me some phone calls, I did get one phone call.
Good. Well, you're not reading your emails, that's the problem.
I talked to a lady, a, a, a young lady on the way in that had emailed me.
Good, well, those emails are coming too, so, appreciate that. All right, Mr. Attorney?
Lennon is fixing me up there.
Uh, with the truancy, uh, we now have a new judge who oversees truancy.
With the truancy, we now have a new judge who oversees truancy.
Smith.
And Judge Boatright.
Oh, yeah.
And we have filed thirty some odd new petitions this month. We're doing everything that we can to maybe thirty some odd before the end of the school year and doing what we can to make sure those students attend classes and increase our attendance rate here in the district. And we work with Kristy May a lot, Travis Weaver, and the clerk's office in coordinating those truancy hearings. And I just want to give you a quick update on that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Dr. Serency?
Yeah, I have just a few things. First of all, on a sad note, just want to point out Crescent City High School, as you know, is going through a very difficult time right now in the loss of one of their staff members. And Dr. Shelby's here and, you know, they're addressing the needs of their faculty and their students. And this is very difficult, especially this time of year, but any time of the year. And so keep them in your prayers. And I know we'll, you know, be in tune with services coming up soon. So anything we can do to assist, please let us know. Let you know, myself and five other administrators, along with one of the Nefec administrators, traveled to Pennsylvania last week, went to an elementary school that's a model school for the mass customized learning concept. And you'll be hearing more about that later, but it is a different approach to education and something we're studying and taking a look at, something that is really standards-based and really addresses grouping students according to their level of learning and, you know, based on mastery of the standard. So we'll give you more information as we move forward. There is a district in California that the entire district operates under MCL. So we've been in contact with them, talked to them on the phone once or twice. And anyways, interesting stuff and we're trying to look for innovative ways to even get better. Third thing is, yesterday I met with county administrator Suggs, Terry Suggs, just to have, start the conversation about the pair of mutual funds. And, you know, we both have our troubles and financial issues and so forth, but at least we're talking. And once again, this is in response to our appearance there. So hopefully, you know, we've got a good relationship and, you know, we're not going to be confrontational about it, but we're cooperating.
Yes.
And that's all we can do now. So I'll keep you posted as we go forward. Last thing is, as you know, last, not last year, early, about this time last year, we, you passed a resolution to rename our football field, Bennett Cooper Field, if you recall that, I believe in June. And after that, our leadership team got together and decided to adopt some new procedures to the existing policy as far as naming facilities. Since that time, I've had, I've had people come to me and asking about, you know, what's the procedure for, if they wanted to name something after someone, which we do from time to time, well deserved. We want to make sure that we have some very clearly defined procedures. And so I'm passing those out to you, just take a look at them, we can discuss them later. But we want to make sure that, you know, we go through the process, we're very careful about doing that. You know, there's usually a cost involved when you rename something. There's an expectation about, okay, we need a sign or we need a plaque or all that. So everything in there is addressed. And just look at that and welcome your input on that. But that, we do want to have, make sure that we follow procedures and make sure that we really are thoughtful about what we name and who we name it after. And there's a lot of deserving people in this community who have done wonderful things, but we want to make sure that we take our time, if you would. So look at that and we can discuss that later.
Along those lines, and I may be incorrect, but the constitutional, the CRC, part of their, I remember them saying about naming public properties, and I'll have to find it, but when they, when we vote in November, that was one of the things, we have the civics class and there's some other educational, yeah, and it had this specific thing that there was going to be state guidelines. So I don't, I, yeah, we'll have to look into that. But I know that there was a discussion about that.
You mean to tell me we're going to have state guidelines that tell somebody in a community that can't name a building after somebody?
They think they can do.
And civics class and all kinds of great stuff.
Nobody voted for that.
Just told me to go.
Anyway.
Those community leaders are going to say, we want to decide.
Right.
Don't forget, we have some graduations coming up. I know you've been notified about it personally tomorrow night.
Okay, we will have a five-minute adjournment for, I know, recess for executive session. And then we will be again back. So this meeting is recess.